Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Around South Jersey. My special guest is Jim Sorrow, Cumberland County Commissioner. Jim, good to see you. How are you?
Great day. It's a great day. Good seeing you, too. It really is.
Thank you. I had the honor of having dinner with Jim last night and forty other people.
Yes.
At the.
Panther Road.
Yeah.
Panther Road Hall.
Well, you know, it's interesting, too, Jim. I've been invited by Nick Acel to go, and I was just, of course, seeing you and all my friends. And it's interesting, my cousin Harry Curley, who's the former mayor of Vines, was there. And he's got to be his late eighties. He looked good, I thought.
Oh, no. He comes in, a lot of times he comes in and helps prepare.
Oh, wow.
So, oh, yeah, he's big on that salad that you like. He helps prepare the salad.
Yeah.
A lot of times he'll come in and help set up the tables. So, no, he contributes a lot. He contributes a lot.
Another person is my cousin, of course, it's Harry's son-in-law, Joey Barufi.
Joey B.
I love Joey. This, I don't know, Joey, if I told you this time, I'm sitting, Joey B's where you are, and I'm here, and I'm talking about all the people that I like in the Buna area, you know, Filalios and Porellas and all this kind of stuff. He taps my hand and goes, Jimmy, what do they all have in common? I said, they're all Italian, and I love them. Well, you know what, though? Seriously, when I think about the people, I mean, you know, certainly you and I have been friends for years, and I think the world of you, Anthony Fanucci, I mean, you go right down, Paul Spinelli, I mean, I don't care who it is in Vinland, they are really good people. And, you know, I, Jim, have you been to Italy?
Yes, I have.
Well, then, you know.
My wife and I, yes.
I mean, I've been there, and it's like, my goodness, they treat you royally, you know, just wonderful people. I mean, I remember going into a trattoria, whatever it was, it was almost like going in their house. And they couldn't have been nicer. Everybody I met in Italy was so nice, you know, so you got good ancestors, too.
Well, when you think about it, Vinland, when I was growing up, I grew up on Cherry Street near the Boulevard. That whole area was all Italian. I mean, literally, I can name all the people that went from the Boulevard all the way to West Avenue, that's all it was, was Italian. And at one time, there was really two races in Vinland, major, and that was the Italians and the Jews. The Jewish people were there. Oh, yeah.
You know, that's a good point you make, too, Jim. I was doing a show recently with the fellow, Noel Brandon, who does Millville Memories with me, and we're talking about that. And Millville never had the Jewish community that Vinland had. In fact, Millville Synagogue closed years ago, and, you know, so, I mean, Vinland has, and I've been, I'm sure you have, too, the synagogue there on Park Avenue in Vinland, that's a nice facility. And it was interesting, too, because a lot of the Jewish people were successful business people, you know.
Very successful. In fact, there's a number of synagogues in Vinland. There was another one, I don't know if it's, I think it's still open, on Grave Street.
Oh, okay.
I think it's between Third and Fourth on the, on the south side. You know, and you have another, well, you did say Park Avenue.
Yes.
Right? Okay. But, and, a lot of the Italians and the Jewish people, they mixed.
Yeah.
There was a lot of marriages between the two cultures, you know?
Yeah, that's a very good point.
So, it flourished there. It really did.
Yeah, it really, you know, and even to this day, Vinland still has, as we talked about, your key people in government and people that are involved. Well, I mean, last night, you know, at the group, there were forty people there, Jim, and probably thirty were Italians, I think.
Pretty much, yeah. We allow, you know.
Yeah. Well, you let me in for a while. Appreciate that.
It's good. You know, they're a great, they're a great bunch of people, the guys there, most of them are from East Vinland.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are farmers, but you have business people that come there, and it's a great atmosphere. They all, they help prepare the food. There's always a group of the same people that cook, but they have great dinners.
Yes, they do.
Great camaraderie. You sit down, and it's great to just sit there, have something really nice to eat, and just talk to, you know, other people. It really is. No problems. You know, that's another thing, you would think, you know, forty, I'm not going to say it was light, but that's, we've had them eighty, eighty-five people.
Yeah.
Okay? Never had a problem.
Yeah.
We've just never had a problem. Everybody gets along very well.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I thank Nick Acel for inviting me, and of course, sat with Nick and Bill Pickleski, who's the mayor of Woodbine.
Mayor Pick.
Yep.
Mayor Pick.
Mayor Pick, he's been mayor forever, Jim.
Yes, he has.
Thirty-three years.
I was going to say, yeah, it's got to be in the thirties that he's been down there in Woodbine.
Boy, I'd say, that's, that man's done a job in Woodbine. When I go through there on the way to Seattle and stuff, you see, I mean, even the intersections are with pavers. I mean, it's like unbelievable.
Well, you were a mayor for, in Millville for a lot of years, right?
Longest ever for Millville, which was twelve years as the mayor. Yeah. But, yeah, but Bill is just, you know, they love him down there. Of course, I don't think he has too much competition either as well, so, because he's done such a good job.
He has.
He runs, he has. Speaking of competition, last, couple of weeks ago, I had Mayor Fanucci on, we do a monthly show, right? So, we're talking about the election coming up, and we won't go to the other part of this story. But anyway, I said to him, you know, we was talking about his election and running and all, and I said, Mayor, who in the heck in their right mind would run against you? I mean, he's done such a great job, I don't see anybody having a shot of beating him, you know?
I don't even think he has any competition.
No, he doesn't. Now, he told me, I talked to him the other night, and he said, no one filed, I mean, officially filed, so, which is good, because I'm glad to see that. I mean, he's, as you know, Jim, what a great job he's done as council, and he just really has.
Well, which is great, they have a team.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the thing. I mean, don't get me wrong, Mayor Fanucci's doing a great job, but you also have to look at his team, the team that he put together.
Yes.
Okay? They work well together.
Yeah, they do, Jim.
And it's very important that they work as a team. You know, that's very, very difficult, especially, and you know, being, you've been in politics for a lot of years, and even though you get a group of people that are all, we'll say, from the same party, all right, you know, a lot of times you'll have tough time working through some problems.
Yeah.
You know, you get a person that's not a team player.
Yeah.
All right? So, you have those situations. What you have that's unique with them is that they have a team that was put together by him, and they work as a team.
Yeah.
And when you work as a team like that, what happens? You get things done.
Yeah.
Okay? You get a lot of things done, and that's what's happening in Vinland, and that's what was missing for a number of years, a whole, complete team. And you got, you got to give him credit for it, but you also give credit to the council people.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Yes.
And you know what? Speaking of team, I mean, Bob Dickinson is super, and Keith Petroski, I admire him so much, I mean, they were there, well, Keith was there, I don't know if Bobby was there before the mayor got there, but he's got good support in City Hall as well.
Yes.
And I guess from there, I want to flip over to the county, county commissioners. And Jim, you, you've been there in the minority, you know, for quite a while there.
Yes, it was only one year that I was in the majority with.
Yeah, that's right, when you were director.
When I was director, right.
What year was that, Jim?
Two thousand and two.
Okay. That was when Jeff Trout was on, right?
Oh, it was Jeff, it was me, Jeff Trout, Hal Johnson was there, but then he went on to become a Superior Court Judge.
Right.
Okay? And if you remember, Doug Santino was appointed.
Oh, that's right, I did, yes.
All right? And then we had Mary Grucci.
Okay.
They were the four, that's what constituted us being a majority.
Gotcha.
And I was, I was director at the time, and it only lasted a year. Let's face it, back then, it was, it was tough.
Well, back then, it was what it is now, for the switch has come. I mean, to Senator Testa's credit, and all of you guys and gals who've worked hard, campaigned hard, Joe Condo and I talked about, you know, you and all the people who were running, how hard you all campaigned. And folks, I was, I often say, and I love Joey Spracy almost as much as you, he's a great guy.
Yes, he is.
And he was the only Republican left in the county. Now, there are ten elected positions, Jim and the other six are county commissioners, and you have the county clerk, the county surrogate, and the county sheriff. Well, currently, right now, when Joe was on, it was Joe and nine Democrats. He was the only Republican at that time. Now, it's completely flipped the other way. Celeste Riley is the only Democrat, and you have nine Republicans.
That is correct.
Which is amazing, to all of your credit, to be able to flip this county from being a blue county to a red county, and, you know, as we mentioned, Senator Testa and all of the, and to his credit, he knew to get people like you to run, Art Marshon, I'm very impressed with him, Sandy Taylor, great lady, you know, and of course, Tori Loos, very, very good at what she does, and you got Doug Alber, the director, Cilio, and Tony Romero. So, I mean, you know, you've got your people that are all there, all seven of you, and I see a camaraderie, but I also see a willingness to get things done. And some of the things I wanted to talk about tonight, Jim, were some of the things that...
I would like to touch upon that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
You know, we talk about, you know, the teamwork, the, we have individuals, but we're working as a team. And I will tell you this, that one of the, the people that were very key into this was Senator Testa, Michael Testa.
Yeah.
You know, he's Senator, but he's also our chairman.
Yes, right.
Okay? And he kind of pulled everything together, and I don't think we would have gotten this far without him, seriously.
No, I agree with you, Jim. I think he deserves a lot of credit.
Yes, he does.
He really does.
You know, his strategy, his advice, telling us which direction he think that we would be more advantageous to take.
Yeah.
Okay? The other thing about the Senator is, he doesn't tell us what to do, okay? He'll suggest, he might highly suggest, but, but what I'm saying, he doesn't say that you have to vote this way. And I think that's very important, that people must know. He allows us to be us.
That's good.
Okay? And we go back to that teamwork, all right? We have a group of people, and when I tell you very seriously, their heart is in this. I mean, big time. It's not there because, oh, I want to have this pin.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, you know, I'm, you know, or, you know, you're at an event, and they go like this, and I'd like to say that Commissioner Jim Sorrow is here, you do the Miss America wave, you know? It's not about that, it really isn't. The, we all have our committees, we're very dedicated to try to make sure we get to those meetings, and you know, a lot of times these meetings are at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Oh, sure, Jim.
You've known that, okay? So, you know, if you work, it's not something that is easy to do all the time.
Right, yes.
All right? So, but we try to get to the meetings. Now, of course, technology, you have Zoom.
Yeah, which is nice.
So, that helps out also. But we're very serious about the committees that we're involved in, and we're going to talk about a lot of things that this board is doing and moving, to move this county forward. One of the things I like to stress is that this will be the second year in a row, we did not raise taxes.
Very impressive, Jim.
Okay? And it's not that easy.
No, I've been there, I know what you mean.
You know, I didn't want to, I don't want to get into this us and them, you know?
Well, there is no them.
No, but I'm saying, no, but, you know, with the politics, but, we've had to solve a number of lawsuits, okay?
Oh, that I know, especially from the jail.
Well, we're not even, we didn't solve that one yet, and there's quite a bit of money that's involved in all of this, but we just solved, or, we just got done another lawsuit. We just settled another lawsuit, okay? That's done.
Yeah.
One of the, the other things that we've done, we've settled seven, I believe seven, it might be only six, but, six or seven union contracts.
That's not easy.
That haven't been touched in about seven, eight years.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay? That some of these were just out there. And I think the message that we got out to our people that work for the county, we're doing our best.
Yeah.
Okay? To make it work. There were places where we would cut here in order to bring salaries up over here, because you know and I know, and a lot of people out there know that, we're, we have state laws that we have to attend to, which means you can only raise things, items, two and a half percent.
Right.
Okay? I believe that's the figure. To do that, sometimes what you do is you cut this, and then you take some of this money and bring it over here. So, you might be able to raise something point two-five more, doesn't sound like a lot, but it's there. But you can raise a point two-five percent more over here because you cut over here.
Right, gotcha.
And that's what we tried to do in all our negotiations. Does everybody think that, you know, that our salaries are where they should be? I'm going to admit, no. You know, and I know.
Sure.
Over the years, it's been tough in Cumberland County, okay? We work hard at it, but I think we gave them fair contracts, I really do, and I hope they believe that also. Well, they signed them.
That's good.
And I don't think there's any kind of animosity in any of this with, you know, after, after them signing it. So, we have that going for us, and we're working very hard. I think we have, I might be wrong again, I think we have one more, one more contract that we have to settle. And again, we're doing the best we can, we want to try to get them what they need to live in this county. We want people to come to this county, we want businesses to come to this county, and the only way we can do that is if we treat our employees properly, and I think you could acknowledge that.
Yeah, good point.
So, we're working on that. There's a lot of things that we're working on, we really are.
Well, we're talking to County Commissioner Jim Sorrow. We'll be back to talk more with Commissioner Sorrow right after these messages.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves by making tires you can depend on, tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them and relied on by every kind of driver. So, you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
At Mintz Insurance, we're proud to have been serving our customers for nearly eighty years, offering thirty different insurance products for your auto, home, and business. And to help ensure that you're getting the best rates possible, we give you up to three quotes for every policy, so you can choose what's right for you. At Mintz, we're part of the community, local representatives, supporting events, and proud of it. It's part of who we are. Mintz Insurance, call today and find out how we can help you save on insurance, or visit us at mintzinsurance.com.
In South Jersey, we do things our own way. We say things out loud, face things head-on, and never back down. And that's how we fight cancer, with the most advanced diagnostics, leading-edge technology, and a team of doctors who know how to treat your cancer. And most importantly, we do it right here, at the Frank and Edith Scarpa Cancer Center in Vinland, and the leading-edge cancer center, Mollica Hill.
Mary, did you know, your baby boy, one day walk on water.
New Life Church in Millville, New Jersey presents Mary Did You Know? Join us Good Friday, March twenty-ninth at seven PM, or Easter Sunday, March thirty-first at eleven AM, for our original musical screenplay of The Cross of Christ. Admission is free. Bring the whole family and enjoy the story of Jesus.
Welcome back to Around South Jersey. My special guest is County Commissioner Jim Sorrow. And Jim, one of the things that I've been so impressed that you guys have done, or are doing, is the county fairgrounds for, you know, the thing that I know you guys want to see is more parks. This is the only county, from what I hear, when I watch the meetings, that doesn't have a county park.
We, we are the only county that does not have a recreation commission, a park system.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
And we're working very hard, besides other projects that we can get into, but we're working very hard to create this park system. Now, right now, we just passed, last night, in fact, Tuesday night, Tuesday night, for monies to be spent on the fairground.
That's great.
I believe the, our portion is one point five million.
Okay.
Okay? We're getting grant money of a little over nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's great.
Okay? And what we're going to do is, we have, we have a plan that was shown Tuesday night, and that plan is what we want immediate, which is like for one to three years.
Okay.
Okay? Then, things that need to be done further down, you know, three to five, three to seven, then seven to ten. Well, with this money, what we're looking at, like, what we want to do right away is, one, the electrical system, okay? We need to, we need to bring it up to date. I think right now it's at seven hundred amps, we wanted to bring it to, I think, twelve hundred amps, or it might be eight hundred amps now. We want to bring that up, because of course, today, you're going to use a lot more electricity, especially when you're going to do events.
Yes.
Like, right now, we were just talking off the air, we really don't use, we don't utilize that, it sits.
Yeah, one week off.
Exactly, the fairgrounds just sit. Well, we, we want to change that.
That's great.
We want people to be using that year-round, okay?
That's wonderful idea.
So, you're looking at the electrical, we're going to do some fencing, we're going to take care of. Do you remember the big red building that's there for the 4H?
Yes, right.
Okay? Well, what we want to do is, we're going to make improvements to that building, so this way, if anything happens again, like the pandemic, we have a drive-through for the Health Department.
That's super.
In order to give them vaccinations, okay?
Wow.
So, that's, we plan to do that. A PA system, park, I mean, it doesn't have a PA system.
Yeah, you certainly need that.
Well, we plan to do that.
That's great.
Okay? Water fountains in certain areas, okay? Upgrade the facilities, you know, the men's room, the ladies' room, upgrade all of that. So, we have a plan, and people can go onto the website, by the way, that's another thing, we've greatly improved the website. Stanfield and his, his group is just doing a great job, and they made a big, in two months, in two months, they've made a big difference on our website. Now, it's not done, okay, but you can see the big, major changes. And I think if you go on the website, you can actually see the master plan for the fairgrounds.
That's great.
All right? So, they can go on that. And of course, they can go on, when you show the meetings.
Yes, right.
If they tune into that Tuesday night meeting, they'll be able to see the whole presentation. So, make sure that you turn into Quinn Broadcasting on the meeting of...
Yeah, and you can just go, folks, to the Quinn Broadcasting Facebook page, or Quinn Broadcasting YouTube channel, and watch it again and again.
Yeah, exactly.
You can do it as well. And you know, Jim, speaking of that, first of all, I'm so happy, to the Republicans' credit, that you guys are transparent, and every meeting, folks, every single meeting that the county commissioners have, that are public meetings, are shown on Channel Twenty-two, and on Facebook, and YouTube, and all that stuff, and...
Even the work sessions.
Yes, exactly. The work sessions, the regular sessions, the whole thing. And the other interesting thing is that, here's an example. Jim, you know, when we were there before, and I was in Millville, was mayor of Millville, we'd have three newspapers that came, Atlantic City Press, Washington Evening News, and the Daily Journal.
Right.
Now, there are no newspapers, and this was interesting, unfortunately, for the city of Millville, Lisa Orndorf resigned.
Yes.
As the mayor. You, if you didn't have Facebook, you wouldn't know.
You would have never known.
No, and it finally hit the paper a couple of days later, I guess they read Facebook and made a story on it and stuff. I don't get the paper delivered, I do read it online. But, I mean, it's amazing that there's, and again, thank God that we're able to partner up, and we could show the meetings, and everybody can go back, you can check it again, and, I mean, and you're wide open to whatever anybody wants to ask, it's like...
Well, do you remember, and I know you do, but when I first got on the, then it was Freehold Board, okay? The meetings were four o'clock in the afternoon, remember?
Oh, that's right, yeah, the work session was, you're right, Jim.
And we pushed to make that six o'clock, because the average working person could not even go.
Right.
To these, these meetings.
I forgot about that.
And now, you know, again, they're still at six, but now you can, we have Zoom.
Yes.
Okay? A person can call in.
Right.
And talk, and ask questions.
And they did that the other night.
The other night, right, exactly. We want as much accessibility to the citizens of Cumberland County as much as possible. We want you to get involved, we want you to be there if you possibly can personally, but if you can't, you can still interact with the commissioners, okay, through this technology. So, I really believe that we're moving forward with this, we want to make sure everything we do, I mean, of course, you know that you have closed sessions, you can't discuss things in, from closed sessions.
Yeah, exactly, right.
And, you know, it has to do with either contracts, attorneys, purchasing, you know, that type of stuff, so those things can't get out, so those are the things that you can't be totally transparent, and everybody understands why with that. But everything else, I mean, you know, we talk, you, people can ask questions.
Yeah.
We're there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? We're very open. And that's, again, we go back to the team.
Yeah.
All right? We work as a team.
Yeah.
And...
Well, you know who else I just enjoy so much is your treasurer, Jeff.
Oh, our CFO.
Yeah.
Ridgeway.
What a great sense of humor.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
He's such a good guy. And to do that type of business and still have a sense of humor is really impressive.
Yeah, that's serious stuff, and he gets you to smile, you know?
Yeah, he does, huh?
Yes. That's the other thing, we, the administration team.
Oh, Hal Johnson, you don't get any better than him. He's, well, you've served with him, we're a super guy.
Yeah, and, and they're there.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And...
And you mentioned Stanfield.
Stanfield, okay, Page is HR, okay? And, you know, it just goes right down the line, the purchasing agent, DeWitty, I'm trying to think of all the people, you know, but the thing is, we, again, they work as I'm trying to think of all the people, you know, but the thing is, we, again, they work as a team. They, what I love about them is that they keep us informed.
Yeah.
Okay, in other words, very few times do I ever get something where, oh, what happened there? I, I didn't get it.
Yeah.
We know. As soon as they know, we know. And I'll tell you what, that makes it so much easier to, to be on, on the, on the commission. Because you're not blindsided.
Yeah.
And that's so important that you're not blindsided.
You're all working together.
You know, the big thing about that, we, we try to make sure, all the commissioners do is, you know, we have a protocol. Example, let's say you're in charge of Public Works.
Right.
Well, you know, a citizen might call me, and say, you know, I have this pothole here, this, this is broken, can you take care of it? Well, instead of me just calling the department, you know, the department head of Public Works.
Sure.
And say, hey, can you get this done? No, what do I do? I call you.
Yeah.
Because you're the liaison. Okay, and I call you, so this way, you're not blindsided. So, this way, down the road, somebody called, hey, Jim Quinn, did, did you know such and such? No. That's not a good feeling.
No, you're right.
You know what I'm saying? So, what, what do you do? You work as a team. You, you, you call that liaison.
Yeah.
Inform them, and you tell the person, say, look, give me your name and phone number, I will contact so-and-so. They will call you.
Right.
Because they're the liaison to that department. That's the way it should be run, okay? And, and that's the way we're working, and we're, we're getting there, okay? Mistakes are made, but that's what we're working for. And when you do that, now it's a team, now it's a nucleus, now you're moving forward.
Do you have Public Works, Jim?
I do. Yes, I do. Me, and I just want to say Tony Romero, okay? Along with the director, he's like the alternate, but he's the alternate almost everything, you know, just Soleil. But, no, we, we, we're, we're working on that.
It was funny, Jim and I have talked in the past about Public Works, and this man is good, he knows his stuff. I didn't know anything. And Jim and I were co-liaisons of Public Works back a while, that was five, six years ago, whatever it was. But I was so impressed with his knowledge. And the one person we did mention, and you had very high regards for him, as did I, I hired him, was Jack Feldus.
Oh, yeah.
And just last week, I had his grandson on the show. His grandson was a runner-up for Mr. Millville, got grandpa's personality, just a super young man. But, you know, that's, again, the people, how lucky we are. You know, when you have a department head, like you said, that's your key. They're, they're the people that you need to do the things that have to be done, to keep you informed, you know?
Another Millville guy that came in, John Newp.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
I love John.
Okay, John and I, I met John back in the early 2000s, when I was on the board in 2001 and 2. And we met, he was the engineer.
Yeah.
For Millville.
Yep.
And we, we got along great, we just, in my opinion, we just hit it off. We're able to work together, we're always in sync with one another. And when we had the opportunity to steal him.
Well, he was happy to leave because I was there, and I left too, and came over to you guys because Millville, at that time, that city government was horrible. It was the worst year I spent my life was the one before I became a county commissioner. And John left before I did. And I was so happy for him, and then I got to see him when I became a pre-order. But, yeah, that was just not.
Well, he, he came over and he, he really straightened out Public Works. He really did. He came in, straightened it all out, got it all cleaned up. He, he was a tremendous asset. I can't say enough about John Newp, he's a great guy. And I, I'm getting to work with him a little bit now. So, it's.
Oh, that's right, yeah, well, he's with John Rugan. We had, in fact, Paul Spinelli just said, glad you got Jim on, he's straightforward and a great friend.
Yes, he is. I love Paul.
I got to tell you, now, I want to see if you know who this guy is. This person is watching, he's the former mayor of Mount Dora, Florida, but a former Vinlander. Do you happen to know who that is?
Whoa, Mount Dora.
It's a beautiful town, folks, I got to tell you. And I was down visiting with him and his lovely wife, Judy, and we were, you know, many times have been down to see him.
Well, it's got to go back a little ways, huh?
Yeah, well, he, I think he ran for mayor one time without a slate, and Bill Biondi was one of his best friends.
I'm trying to think.
Fireworks, fireworks.
Oh, Jerome.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Nick Jerome, Nick's watching, Nick, so good to have you with us.
Where are you at, Nick? How you doing, buddy?
And I'll tell you what, he did a fantastic, what a beautiful town, Mount Dora. So, if you ever get down there with Sue, you got to go up and visit, and I'm sure Nick would love to see you, Nick and Judy. And he just did a fabulous job, it's right on the lake, and all that. They had the seaplanes too, in that town, beautiful downtown. And Nick and Judy took me around, and we went to wonderful restaurants, the waterfront, and all that kind of stuff. And so, I imagine it was about eight years or so, he was the mayor of Mount Dora. And just a great guy, really is, and still is, and I'm glad that he's watching us. So, you never know where you are. You know, you got people from everywhere. I did want to mention Mary Messick, messaged you, basically, and she wants, and she had a good point. Talk about Recreation Department, I don't know which, who you have, but the Millville person is really the, the lady, I'm trying to think, think of her name in a minute. She was just talking about her being maybe helpful, Samantha Cruz.
Okay.
Samantha, but she was like the mayor's right-hand person, and she does a lot of the recreation and the, the events, Third Fridays and those types. And the Fourth Friday on the riverfront, things like that. So, I think what she was saying was, you may want to pick her brain, you know, as to people that have.
Tell her to give me a call. I'm very serious about it. I'm on the Recreation Commission.
Good.
Okay, the committee, not a commission, I'm on the Recreation Committee. Victoria Loads is on, on the fairgrounds.
Okay, right, gotcha, yeah.
Very much in, she's very much involved with the fairgrounds. And again, what we're, you know, we were talking about the Recreation Commission and the fairgrounds, but getting back to that, my idea is to have three different parks.
Oh, that's right, Jim, yeah.
In, in Cumberland County. What I'm looking at is, we were talking about the old Clancy Country Club. Now, that's, right now, it's in the hands of the Green Acres. And technically, what was supposed to happen was, when they got it, they were supposed to maintain it so we can still have the trails in order to get around in the parks. It was supposed to be turned into a park. I would like to get that back.
Oh, what a great place, Jim.
Having the three parks, that would be the park for the Fairfield-Bridston, that area.
Yeah, the western portion.
The western portion. And talking to a number of people, there's grant money out there, okay, to purchase and to develop the park.
Oh, that's super.
So, that's one thing I wanted to do. Then, of course, develop the, the fairgrounds, right? Then, you know, across the street, there's land that the county owns.
Yes, I do know that, yeah.
Now, one portion's landlocked, and I, I believe we're in conversation with the individuals, with the Jewish.
Right, cemetery.
Cemetery.
Right, exactly.
To be able to get access to it.
Right.
So, we're working on that. Then, we want to get, and if, you know where the 4H is on Morton Avenue?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
We want to build that up too.
That's nice.
It's like a mini park.
Right.
The, the land that we own there.
Uh-huh.
And that'll be in conjunction with the, what do you call it, the fairgrounds.
Right.
Then, the other idea is to have one that's closer to the Vinland Millville area, pick it, pick a central location between Vinland Millville.
Where we were last night, in that area.
There you go. So, you know, do that and have another park there, park system. So, we would have three separate parks.
Going from none to three?
That's, that's the idea, okay? How's it going to work out? We really don't know. I'd be more than happy to sit down with the woman that was involved, Samantha? I'd really love to be able to sit down and, and pick her, right now, seriously, just have her give me a call.
Well, Mary will, I'm sure. Mary, you make sure Samantha calls Commissioner Sorrow, and, yeah.
Do that, I, I would really love to speak with her. We all would, because we, we, look, we have very, very intelligent people in Cumberland County. We do. And, you know, we have seven people on the board, and I, I, a lot of, we're all, we all have our own niche.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
But, that doesn't mean we have all the answers.
Yeah, gotcha.
So, what we need is, we need individuals to come out and help us with these ideas. So, if business people want to get involved, that'd be great.
Well, speaking of that, Jim, get this, it's Carol, who has the thing at the airport, I don't, I guess she's at the airport. Carol Johnson-Olive has MCI TC, Heavy Equipment and Landscaping.
Okay.
School, and she has students, and she said hers, well, here it is, he's got it up now, her students would love to help wherever they can, and, and, you know, help out. And they're, of course, they're just learning.
But she has a school?
Yes, she does, yeah.
Oh, that's great, God bless you, Carol. That's an awesome thing, you know, the trades, that's, that's very, very important.
She's had it for quite a long time, too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I've talked with her, and, you know, she, like you say, it's been, last I knew, she was out to the airport, you know, where her school was. And she gets some state funding and, you know, that type of thing. So, again, it's funny, Jim, because when you think about it, they're, they could sort of be like interns for contracting, going out and working with the contractors, and they'd have the abilities to do those things as well. We're talking with Jim Sorrow, Cumberland County Commissioner, about all the great things happening in Cumberland County. We'll be back with Jim right after these messages.
Imagine living without pain. For over 35 years, doctors Bebe and Doyle have helped thousands of people find relief from all types of pain. Millville Chiropractic Center has four doctors on staff specializing in hands-on or light-touch, drug-free pain relief methods. The examination, x-rays, therapies, and adjustments are all performed at one location. Schedule a consultation today. Enjoy life without pain and discomfort. Millville Chiropractic Center, the area's number one pain relief center.
Many people treat their health like a game. With the Complete Care Health Network, it's easy to start your healthcare journey. Our mental health services focus on the emotions and behaviors that affect your overall well-being, and features psychiatric, counseling, and addiction services, including our exclusive Fresh Start program, designed to help combat the opioid epidemic in our communities. Plus, all the other specialties you expect from Complete Care. Level up your health with us. The Complete Care Health Network. No games, just great healthcare for everyone.
The most important decisions a family can make are usually made around the kitchen table. At DeMarco Louisi Funeral Home, we believe pre-planning and the difficult decisions you face with the loss of a loved one should also be made around the comfort of a table, like a family. Our friendly, kind, and compassionate staff is committed to helping you get through this most difficult time. In your time of need, trust DeMarco Louisi Funeral Home, Vinland.
We're all looking for God. All the signs point to, there is really a God. We try to find Him in all kinds of ways, in all kinds of places, and through all kinds of things. But there's only one way to find Him. That's by personal experience with Him. Come visit us this Sunday. We can introduce you to Him. New Life Church, Millville, New Jersey.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves by making tires you can depend on. Tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them, and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
Welcome back to Around South Jersey. Commissioner Jim Sorrow is our guest. And Jim, a couple of things that are major things going on in Cumberland County. Certainly, the jail situation. Tell us what's happening and where we are for the county.
Well, you know, we had that, what we call the jail debacle, okay?
Oh, absolutely, I was around when that was happening.
Well, we were, we were supposed to build a jail, and I actually voted for it because I thought it was necessary. At the time, our CFO explained to me, and I had sat down with him, because I'm very hands-on, that the amount of money that we were paying for to maintain the jail and fix everything, it would be cheaper to actually build the jail and pay for it. So, this is, this is the reason why I voted for it. Then, I, I left the board and everything just went to hell.
Yeah, if you'd have stayed, we'd have been okay.
And you know what? You advised me to do it, and I should have listened to you because I'm back where I belong. I really do feel that I, I, I belong on, on the board of commissioners. Right now, what we're doing is, we're, we're sitting down and we're talking with Salem.
That's good.
They have a jail. And Gloucester County.
Yes.
Now, what we want to do is put additions on to the Salem County Jail.
Super.
And this is, this is going to be a partnership, okay? Not a shared service, there's a big difference. This is a partnership. We are going to be part of that system, okay? Doing that, we'll be able to move our inmates to them. We are, I, I want you to try to wrap your head around this, this number. One cent of our tax per month is going towards our inmates.
Jimmy, at one point, was.
One cent, which is $800,000.
A month.
A month?
Yeah, no, I remember, it was millions of dollars that it would cost to run the jail.
Okay, so, just that alone, okay? We, we need to do this.
Right, yeah.
Because we believe we'll save money. So, you have that situation where we're, we're in negotiations now, and I, I really feel good about it. I really do.
That's good.
I went over there and I talked with the individuals, there was a team of us, and I got to go through the, the whole place. They run it good.
That's good.
They, they do a good job over there, so I feel very confident.
Well, my buddy Ben Laurie's the director.
Yes.
Yeah, good, good guy.
So, we're there, we went there, and now we're working on, we had to get some DEP things squared away because we're, we're, we're considering putting on the addition. And so, we're working on that. And I, I really think that things are going to work out well with this. I, I got, I got a great feeling with this. And it's important for us, then later on, after we do that section, then another thing, I was, I was talking to other individuals, and that is our juvenile detention. We really don't have one.
Right, we've shipped them out.
We send our children out.
Yes, right.
And I don't care for that, okay, because you're sending them a good distance away. I, I would like to try to keep them back in the area, okay?
Jim, the last time I looked, though, there weren't many.
None.
Was very few, thank God. I mean, that's a wonderful thing that was.
Oh, no, no, I, I thought you meant the very few juvenile detentions.
No, but what I would, yeah, but I'm saying, the number of clients that we had from Cumberland County.
It's starting to get larger.
Okay, because last time I'd heard, it was like a dozen or something.
And I was talking to the commissioner over in Atlantic County.
Okay.
Rizley.
Right, John, yeah, I do, I like John.
Yes, I do, I, I like John a lot. I got a lot of respect for John. I'm on a couple committees with him.
Yeah, I was too.
We were talking then, we were at the Southern New Jersey County Commissioners' meeting, okay? It was Monday. And we see that the problem is not going to lessen, it'll, it's going to increase.
Yeah.
And this is something that we have to work at. And I actually said to all the people at, at that meeting, I would like to see a forum with the counties.
Yeah.
The southern counties, okay, and see how we can solve this problem.
Great idea.
Because Cumberland County's not the only one that has this problem.
Right, good point, yeah.
So, again, you're looking at, we have a lot of intelligent people there, let's get together, put a forum together, and decide how we're going to solve this problem. We can solve this problem, we just have to put our mind to it. What happens over the years, you, you, when you, when you find a Band-Aid, you keep putting Band-Aids on it, you kick the problem down the road, okay? I don't want to do that anymore.
No.
I want to step forward, we, we acknowledge we have a problem, let's decide how we're going to cure it.
Well, I love the way you're going with it, Jim. I think that partnership, you know, that you're talking about with Salem County is great. I had some beautiful woman contact put on here. She said Lauren's wedding was at Mount Dora, and we took the auto train, meaning that's his beautiful wife, just said that. And then she, and thank you, Sue. She also mentioned that the county website has a link for QBC to watch the meeting, so you can go to the county website. There's Sue's thing, Lauren's wedding was in Mount Dora, and we took the auto train.
That was, that's, that's our niece.
Okay, so you were in Mount Dora.
Yes.
You forgot how beautiful.
No, I just couldn't figure out who the mayor was.
No, that's right, yeah.
But, the, no, yeah, our, our niece got married, and I, I was very honored. Her, her father passed, Sue's brother passed away, okay? And she had asked me to fill in and walk her down the aisle.
What an honor.
Yeah, that's a truly great honor, great kid.
Yeah, that's great.
Great kid. She married a great guy. He's a, he's a fireman and.
Does she live in Florida?
Yeah.
Oh, in Mount Dora?
No, she lives just outside of Tampa.
Okay.
I believe. So, she's.
Well, she picked a good place for the wedding.
Yes, she did, yes, she did, very beautiful area.
Now, before we wrap up, Jim, I know one of the things that I'm so happy to hear, and it seems like the county commission's moving forward, is the sewer plant.
Oh.
And downtown.
To everybody, wastewater treatment plant down at Fortescue and Gandy's Beach. I am really, really excited about this. We are real close. We are very, very close in getting this together. I think we need one more piece of the puzzle for funding. You, you have a situation down there where the septic systems are failing. Which means that there's a certain amount of pollution to the Bay Area, Bay Shore area.
Right, yes.
Doing that, that means you have problems with the oyster industry down there. They can't, they can't grow in that area.
Yes, good point.
So, you, you have a problem with, of course, employment.
Yeah.
And the last thing we need is people to become unemployed. Doing this project, you're, you're going to solve, one, an environmental problem, two, you're going to save an industry.
Yes.
Which is multi-million dollar industry for South Jersey.
That made Port Norris many years ago.
Millions upon millions of dollars, even today, okay, is, is in that industry. You're looking at businesses down there that would go out of business, will be able to stay in business, great possibility of them expanding.
Yes.
New businesses coming down.
Yeah.
More employment in that area, expansion of everything in the area, which means, when you look at government, what are we? They just look at us, well, all you care about is money, okay? Let's say we did only care about money, tax ratables.
Oh, Jim.
So, what happens is, when you build an area like that, okay, and you build it up and make it whole again, okay? People are, are moving into the area. What does that do? It lessens the tax burden on the rest of the county.
Yes.
So, this is something that's a beginning. I want to throw out a big kudos to Jane Acelta.
Yes, I heard you at the county meeting, yeah.
She has been working diligently on this project. God bless her, she's doing a great job, she's there. She's solving problems as she's going along. The, the mayor down there.
Mike Rothman.
Rothman, Mike Rothman is doing a great job. Their whole council or commission.
And Bob Campbell, we got to.
Yeah.
Give him a lot of credit because he was the one who initially did, yeah.
Our board, we're working as hard as we can. I, I believe that all, all of us really, really want to see this work. We really do.
Yeah, that's super.
But, you know, we have to make sure that the funding is there.
Yeah.
Okay, the last thing we want to do is get in the middle of a project.